My name is Dana Cron. I'm a director on the FORHAB board. I am here to kind of moderate this and just to give the audience an idea of how this is going to work. We're tight for time because the Bernie ISD is after this. So we need to get through this, but what I have is six questions. And the source of the questions are a number that I received from the membership and from various citizens. And a lot of times their questions are similar. So you kind of have to massage them so you can get all of them together in one particular question. There are six envelopes here. Each one contains one question. The reason they're in envelopes is I don't want anybody to think that any question got passed off to anybody preferentially. What I will do is I'll start on this end and I will allow our friend Ruben to pick one and open it and read it. And then you, once you're ready to answer, pass it down to the next person and they will get their chance to read it and sweat it and figure out what they're going to say. And we will proceed that way through the questions. Each person has up to three minutes to respond. And once we hit three minutes, I have a young lady in the back that has a little, what I call a lightsaber. And it starts with green and then it goes to yellow when you've hit two minutes. And when it goes red, I throw things at you to shut you up. And that's kind of the, pardon? I'm about to let them introduce themselves. So that's about how it's going to go, both this time as well as when we do the Bernie ISD ones. So to get underway, the first thing I'd like to do is for each of the candidates, starting on this end, to take two minutes, count them to, and introduce yourself and anything else that you would like to get in in those two minutes. So have at it.
Well, thank you for hosting, moderating. Thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Ruben Olveda. I'm currently place three council member. I'm still new to council. I've only been on council for a little over a year. So I had to do this like a year ago, so I'll go over my background again. Native Texan, grew up in South Texas. Graduated from Texas A&amp;M College Station with a political science degree in 2001. From there, moved to Houston to attend law school at South Texas College of Law. Graduated in 2005. Practiced for a few years. Made my way to San Antonio, specifically Leon Springs, with my wife in 2010. In 2018, we bought property in Fair Oaks Ranch. Probably should have done it sooner, but my wife thought I was crazy at the time. Built our forever home and we've been there ever since. My wife, Leslie, she's a Bernie ISD teacher. We have two young children. One attends Voss Middle School, one attends Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary School. In my professional life, I've been an attorney for almost 20 years, mostly a small business owner. As an attorney, I represent some of the biggest companies in Texas when they get sued for personal injury. And I think that lends well to my place on council, just analyzing facts, being analytical, using common sense and trying to do what's best. Last year, I decided I wanted to give back to the community and serve some time. So I was appointed to the Municipal Development District Board in August of 2023. Special election opened up for place three, threw my hat in the ring. Was elected with, I would say, overwhelming support, which I do appreciate that support. And I've enjoyed my time. It's been a learning experience. It's been fun. I think my feet are wet now. I've got good experience, good context for what's happening currently and what we might be facing in the future. And so I'd like to continue to serve for the next three years and hopefully I can get the opportunity to represent the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch.
Scott.
Hi, everybody. My name is Scott Rose. And I, a little bit of my background is I'm retired. I was 38 years as a sales executive for a 3M company. And we finished, I finished my career in the Hill Country area handling South Texas. And my wife and I, Carol, built our dream home here in Fair Oaks. In 2008, we actually joined the club in 2000. So we've been in the community for quite a while. And we love Fair Oaks and we want to keep it special the way it's always been. So I guess my concern, the reason that I'm interested in this is, is I want to make sure that the citizens are aware of everything that's going on, that the money that is spent, which is your money, is fiscally responsibly spent. And it appears to me that in a lot of cases, there just isn't a lot of communication. I guess poor communication with the citizens as to where massive amounts of money are being spent. And I, I hope to try to be as transparent as I can to make sure that you all know where your money's being spent. Thank you.
Next. Should be on.
Good evening. Thank you for hosting this and being here tonight. My name's Dale Pearson. And my family, we moved into Fair Oaks Ranch about a little over 16 years ago. And of course, they, they love the community and we enjoy it very much. And it means a lot to us. During the past 10 years, I volunteered at the city, different commissions. And I had the opportunity to serve on two very important commissions. One was the Home Rule Charter Commission, where we literally wrote the city's constitution, me and 10 other members of the community. And that was also input, input from the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch. And then the citizens voted on that, the new charter. And over 92% of the citizens approved that, the charter. So now we're a home rule city versus general law city. Big advantage for the city. And the other commission, I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission in the city for six and a half, seven years and was first
30 seconds.
appointed by City Council at, in 2016. And it's, I've been reappointed by the City Council three additional times to serve on it. And I enjoy serving on the planning zoning. So I have a lot of experience with the city and the personnel, the management and City Council. And it's a well-run city and it's a good city. And now I'm running for City Council. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jim Roth. This card says Jim Pearson. We're brothers now. I changed the name to Roth on here. This is my teleprompter here, so I'll be reading a lot. I was raised in Western New York. I graduated high school there and joined the Air Force for four years. Went on to Bismarck Junior College in North Dakota, where I met my wife of 59 years, who's out there. And then I went to Ohio State University, chemical engineering degree, and I was a marketing product specialist. In 2007, wife and I chose to retire in Fair Oaks Ranch because it's a small, safe, family-oriented community. I wish to maintain that character. If elected, I'll represent the conservative goals of the founders of Fair Oaks Ranch. With common sense government, major decisions based on total community involvement, especially high-dollar expenditures. The reason I'm running for council is I do not agree with the way that City Council has operated for the last seven to eight years. Number one, the recent office space slash community center slash civic center slash council chambers sham. Number two, the recent office space, community center, et cetera. Number three, we rushed into a home rule charter so that we could annex everything possible lawsuit. My research shows that there was only one lawsuit in Fair Oaks Ranch history until 2016. There are five, six, and seven. Going on eight. There is a tremendous wasteful spending on studies and consultations. There's a lack of decision-making and fiscal responsibility. You're kicking it down the road, building an administration and not addressing infrastructure. We're about ready to pay for that with recent bonds coming up. We're going to have $30 million in bonds pretty soon if you continue on this path. And only about $12 million in revenue. And the City Council appears to have a one voice, one word policy.
Jim, we need to kind of wind it up, please.
Okay. If you elect me, Scott, and Kevin, you'll know almost every aspect of what's going on. We will not speak to you with one voice. Thanks for your consideration.
I've lived in Fair Oaks Ranch, I've lived in Fair Oaks Ranch for 20 years. I'm a proud Aggie with a degree in industrial engineering. I spent my corporate career running operations for banks like American Express and Wells Fargo. My primary responsibility in that, in that function was to deliver excellent customer service at the lowest possible price. I believe I can bring that fiscal responsibility to the City Council. I'm running on three principles: financial responsibility, common sense, and transparency. I believe my commitment to those three principles is exhibited by my opposition to the City Council's current support of two projects, the Community Center and the Gateway Monument. The bids to build the Community Center just came in between $2.6 and $3.8 million for a 5,300-square-foot building, plus an estimated $250,000 for furniture and equipment, and ongoing yearly expense of $50,000. The Gateway Monument, what I think amounts to a fancy sign near the city limit on Fair Oaks Parkway, was just approved last night by the Municipal Development District at a cost of $225,000. Quite a lot of money for a welcome sign, I believe. I believe both of these projects are financially responsible, don't make common sense, and haven't been explained to the citizens or put forth to the citizens, so they're lacking transparency. I believe this level of spending of citizen tax dollars should be put to a vote of the citizens, not just decided by the council.
30 seconds.
The City Council will say, this is not your tax dollars. But what they really mean is, this is not your property tax dollars. The MDD funds currently estimated to be about $3.9 million at the end of 2025. Are collected from sales tax paid within the district, including online purchases like Amazon. So if you've paid any sales tax, it is your tax dollars. Don't be fooled, you are paying for these projects. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Scott Parker and I'm running for reelection to place five. Thank you FORHAB for giving us this opportunity tonight to come out and meet with everybody. My wife and I have 20-plus years living on the ranch. We live on the north side, in the back 40s it's referred to. When we moved here, my wife had always wanted a paint horse in the backyard. And now we have a paint horse, draft horse, donkeys, and we had a goat named Boris. We've raised kids here and who attended Bernie schools. We love Fair Oaks Ranch. I'm currently on council and I've gained insight into what it takes to keep balance in our city operations. I'm pleased to be able to help keep the city moving forward with the following: concerned in managed growth while maintaining the Hill Country appeal of the ranch; continuing to deliver top-notch services for our residents. We do this by having the right people with the right skills. And we're always one of the top safest cities in Texas, number 16 this year. This is an important trend to keep up. I support our cops and all they do for us. Keeping the city tax rates one of the lowest for the past five years. In addition to regular council duties, I've been a member of several city committees and very proud to have helped this year with the rewrite of the city emergency operations plans. I'm a retired Air Force officer and a retired federal agent with strong law enforcement and management background. Because of this, I tend to be analytical and prefer to make decisions based on data.
30 seconds.
I fully intend to continue to assist in keeping the ranch a safe place through continued support of our PD, emergency operations coordination with strategic partners, and taking a hard-lined approach to the upcoming fire and ambulance contracts this fiscal year. Thank you very much. You'll back my time.
Thank you, gentlemen. Let's get this started and guess who gets to start? Any questions about what we're doing up here?
We're all going to answer the same question.
Same question, each of you. And then you will all hopefully get to be first for a question and it'll go on down the line. So pick one, anyone. Take a card. You're good? And read it, please.
Sealed well.
It's kept in a mayonnaise jar buried in my backyard.
Grammy goes to, question, what new ideas, if any, do you have to improve the operation of the city and benefit the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch? Good question. I think that we need to continue our transparency and, can I see that? Continue our transparency and provide the essential services that we have been providing. I don't know that I can think of anything that, that hasn't been thought of. I know that whether it's this council, prior council, or all of the wonderful city staff, I believe everyone tries really hard to make use of your tax dollars so we can be transparent, we can be fiscally responsible, and we can deliver on those essential services and keep the city safe. I think we're pretty lean right now. Population of 11,000 people, we only have 83 staff members. Our biggest line items are public works and public safety. And so I think that if we continue to invest the tax dollars on the items that are most important while keeping the operation lean, while delivering excellent customer service and government service to the taxpayers, then I think everyone can remain happy. And we've done that while inflation goes up, our revenue remains steady. We've lowered the tax rate and I've only been part of one billing cycle. And we've lowered the government expenses. And so I think that from my perspective, only been a year in, I'd like to continue doing what I've been doing and contributing, listening, communicating, and push this thing forward and try to keep everyone happy.
Thank you.
Probably not going to be a lot left to say by the time you get to the end here. But, you know, I think that the important thing to me is that the people of Fair Oaks Ranch have good communication, that they need to know what's going on. And I see that, I don't see an effective effort to actually, when money is being spent, that this, I mean, this communication could be sent out via mailings. We certainly have all the addresses, everybody in Fair Oaks. We could mail out a thing saying, incidentally, we're considering this or we're considering that. But the problem is, is that the people of Fair Oaks aren't, aren't able to be involved, you know, from a referendum standpoint. I understand there's no referendum. But I think the communication to the people could certainly be better on where their money is being spent. Now, we all want to keep our taxes low. I think everybody will agree to that. And I think when you have non-essential projects that are being put at the front of the line as opposed to something like maybe a water treatment plant, maybe a water tower, you would think that this is where the money should be spent, that everyone in this city would be interested in. What it appears to me is that the non-essential, you know, that the favorite kind of spending for the city is more. And I don't think that's right. I think the people need to be more involved in all the decisions being made on the money being spent. I think we've got a wonderful city. We want to keep it that way. We want the culture to stay the same. We don't want this, this is Fair Oaks, not Stone Oak. And that's going to, that's very important to me. That's why we moved out here. So I think bottom line is, communication, transparency is the most important thing for me to give to you.
If I were to be elected for City Council, I would be in favor of the proposed Community Center. I think investing is good for the city. The city is growing fast. The 10 years ago, the last five years, it's going to continue. And by not investing, I think the city's going in reverse. And I don't think that's the city's plan. But the growth is going to be the driver to, most of the items that, or a lot of items that the city pays for is growth-related one way or another. And the idea to get a community center, maybe with a, with a good price, based on maybe some MDD money, is a great investment that would last generations in the city and good for the citizens and good for the community and meeting places that we so desperately need for civic groups or HOA groups, city business meetings. Of course, the City Council's been cramped in the Police Department building for, for years. And that's not a very efficient place. And it also keeps citizens from wanting to go to a City Council meeting because it's very limited on the number of seats and chairs. And that's very important. And meeting rooms for the, our meeting rooms in addition to a City Council area for business to be conducted about the city so more citizens can learn about the finances of the city and who's doing what. So a lot of times investments don't cost, they pay. This is a situation where I see it's going to pay for the benefit of the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch. The city land is already paid for on the campus, if you will. So that's conservative, if you will, and frugal. And, but the, it's important to think about not only today, but the future, in the future years, due to the growth in Fair Oaks Ranch and pretty much everywhere else. The civic groups and community groups, FORHAB meetings, there's a lot of excitement for the city and places for city
Wind it up, please.
citizens to enjoy in a venue that will serve those purposes. Thank you.
Well, I guess it's not really a new idea, but I'd like to address that first. That's a cramped location. We do need a civic center someday, but we need it in a proper location, in a proper space. To put a civic center down there is ridiculous. Okay, new ideas. Something for town council to consider: a Home Rule Charter Review Committee, starting almost immediately. It'll take a few years to do. Council ought to consider districts also, because there's some people in this area that don't feel like they're part of this Fair Oaks Ranch. And they should be represented. As far as expenses, we're at $12 million in bonds right now, total. You got $11 million left, which are earmarked for projects on roads. That's going to bring us to $23 million. You're talking about a water tower, estimated between $6 and $8 million. You're progressing towards $30 million in bonds, either COs or GOs. You can't do revenue. That's a lot of money for a city that's got $12.5 million of income coming in. You're going to be paying almost $2 million in principal and interest. Right now, you should address infrastructure corrections and not what I consider nice things to have. We can get that as a city later, but right now, we need infrastructure.
Well, I would like to also emphasize the communication and involvement of the citizens in decisions. I do get a lot of communication from the city. And in fact, I think I told the mayor not too long ago that I feel like sometimes I'm overcommunicating. When something happens like a thunderstorm, you know, I get an email, a voicemail, and I often get, I think you get a text too. And those things come, but I haven't seen communication along things that are really important like the civic center. I mean, I saw the community center rather. I saw a little bit of it, but it was about, you know, which, what kind of roof would you like to see? It wasn't about, do you actually want to have a community center? It was, what do you want the roof to look like? So I think that's very important, that we involve the citizens more and more in those kind of decisions, especially decisions that are the kind of money that is being proposed to spend on the community center. Secondly, I think that, kind of along the same line, that projects should be better prioritized. So I went to the MDD meeting last night and learned that there are only two projects currently on the MDD dossier. And that's the Community Center and the Gateway Project. I have a question. Why hasn't the City Council submitted a project request for the water tower to the MDD? If, you know, why not try and spend the MDD funds on something that I would see as much more necessary than a Community Center and a Gateway Project? The MDD was formed using Texas local government codes, specifically codes Chapter 377 and 505 dot 151 to 158. Code 505 dot 154 is titled, "Projects Related to Water Supply." Seems to me that building a water tower would be a project related to water supply and that that project ought to be submitted to the MDD so it can be kind of, you know, prioritized against things like the Community Center, the Gateway Project. If the MDD, other rules and regulations wouldn't allow that, then fine. But, you know, hasn't even been asked, hasn't been submitted. And I believe that that's the problem.
Wind it up, please.
Okay. That's it then.
When I, when I came to council, I knew very little about how government operated, our local government operated. But one of the things that I learned pretty quick, that transparency is really important. And getting information out to everybody is really important. Everybody at the city for the past several years has, has pushed for different ways to get information out and to get more residents involved in some of our projects. This year, for instance, we formed the TSAC Committee, right? Transportation Safety Committee. This is a citizens committee. It's run by citizens who go ahead and look at issues that are brought before the committee insofar as, that have to do with transportation, getting around the city, keeping our streets safe. And this was an idea that, that came, came about, that I was really very, very happy to see because it involves the community. When we started talking about a Gateway Project, and, and this is garnering a lot of, a lot of information. But when we first started talking about, what are we going to do, for those of us that have been longtime residents, to replace the wooden tower that we used to have out by Frost Bank? To replace the boat, for the rest of you that have been out here for a while, that had all the, the flowers and was of you that have been out here for a while, that had all the, the flowers and, and was well-maintained, but that property doesn't belong to us. It belongs to Texas. We just, it was brought up by a number of people that we needed something to go ahead and say, you know, what is Fair Oaks Ranch about? But we formed a committee that was comprised not only of council members and staff, but of community members as well. And we came up with some, I thought, pretty darn good ideas. But those are just ideas. And in order to know how much money things are going to cost, it has to go through a process. And now, we know how much this is going to cost. It's not written in stone that it's going to happen, but it's something that can be, at least now we know, we have the engineering that's done. What's, what is it going to cost to go ahead and do this project? In keeping, in getting information out to everybody, we recently revamped the city's website because it was, for me, as being, working with it all the time, at times could be a nightmare to find information. It was difficult. We also hired a social media person to go ahead and get information out.
Wind it up, please.
Just in, in wrapping up, I, I believe that we have, we are always open to new ideas to get information out to your, to the citizens of the ranch, and that we are always looking for participation. If we have a town hall, please come, because that's where we provide a lot of information out to everybody. And I'm getting the red light of death. So, thank you very much.
Three minutes is shorter than most people think, right? All right. Your turn.
Government inefficiency.
Oh, okay. It's, talk about your thoughts and engagement to date on the various city needs, issues, and environment. And I guess that's why we're here tonight. So, once again, I, I think that, my wife says I'm cheap. I said I'm thrifty. You know, I want to keep things as responsibly fiscal as possible. I think when we talk about a city, community center or civic center, my understanding is, is that the existing building that's on campus, for just about $700,000, it was going to be completely remodeled, refurbished, reimagined, all the asbestos or any other issues that were needed. The thing could be completely gutted and reimagined into anything you wanted it to be. You wouldn't have to damage trees that are older than all of us, which is potentially what's going to happen. And this is for, but the city at that time, I believe, said, oh, that's too much money. Well, that was $700,000. And now, all of a sudden, not unlike the gateway monument, we're up to over $2.5 million. That's before furniture, before fixtures, probably $3 million. There's got to be a better, if we've already got an existing building. I understand that maybe city council wants, you know, some new chairs and, and, you know, I mean, this design, if you look at the design, it looks like a gym, a gymnasium. It's got vinyl floors. It's got two bathrooms, a back meeting room. We spent 56 or something thousand dollars on a designer to come up with that? You've got to be kidding. For $3 million? So all I'm saying is, I think we need to relook at the way we're spending money here. I probably could have been more involved in the city than I have been in the past, but I guess that's why I'm here now, is I just want to make sure that everybody has a fair chance to be involved in the decisions that happen in the city. And I don't see that happening at this point. So hopefully, we can get that done. Thank you.
Some thoughts on what the city needs. Off the top of my head, and bringing it up again, in terms of the growth that the city's going through and will continue to go through, is making it more and more difficult within the city limits of Fair Oaks Ranch for the city to acquire land for growth that the city's going to need in the utilities departments and the water departments and wastewater, et cetera. And since you asked the good question of what do I think about city needs, some land for future use by the city. Because I'm assuming you mean city needs versus citizens' need in this. And I would say that would be something to consider and plan for, because we'll continue to grow, particularly in the next five years. And there's a lot already on the table and planned. So that's, that's my thought on that. Thank you.
Subject was government inefficiency? Is that the subject, government inefficiency? City needs, issues, and the environment. All the issues are infrastructure. I can't point that on enough. We're going to use most of our cash reserves to build some fancy buildings. We have infrastructure problems. And we're going to take out bonds to do that. It doesn't make sense. We just recently had about, you know, six, five, six million dollars in bonds taken out. We could have paid for that. That's inefficient.
Okay, my involvement to date on city issues. While I haven't attended in person many city meetings until the last month or so, I have been to two recent city council meetings. And as I said, the MDD meeting last night. I have, over the last several years, read the minutes and gone through the issues and read communications about what's been going on in the city. So, you know, you don't actually have to be at the meeting to understand what happened at the meeting, although it's rather delayed. It's, you know, two or three weeks sometimes before you can actually get the information. I have also engaged with our mayor multiple times over the last few years on issues. I've called Greg many times about an issue that I would read about in the minutes to the meetings and call. And he's actually come over to my house a couple of times and sat down and, and talked to me about the issues. So while I haven't been a, you know, presence at meetings, I have been keeping up with what's going on in the city. And I, I, I think having the committees that Scott talked about earlier to make decisions about things like the gateway and et cetera, I think that's good. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I just don't consider that communication to the rest of the residents of the city. You pick four, five, or six people out, and they become very familiar with what's going on. But I don't think the rest of the residents know. I, I think if you did a poll right now of the city residents, I think you'd find a pretty significant amount of them don't even, don't even realize that the city is about to spend this kind of money on a community center, don't realize that they're going to be putting up a, what's a very nice-looking monument. Don't, I've, I've seen the pictures of it. I'm not arguing with that. But I believe that most residents, when you start that construction, they're going to drive by there and go, what is this? What, what are they doing here? I just don't think the communication is there. And I think that's a really important part of what we should be doing. Thank you.
I had no idea what I was in for when I first signed up to run for city council. And my, my colleagues are correct. It's very time-consuming. And getting the word out to the residents is, is a, is a major undertaking. And we, over the past couple of years, I've watched the different things that we've, we've put into place and attempted to put in place. The town hall meetings, the social media presence, increasing that by hiring a, a social media coordinator. It's, it's very hard, but yet people have to be willing to, to, to hear what, what we're saying, because we don't want to work in a vacuum either. And I think that it's important that once I, once I was able to understand, because we all ran initially on transparency. Transparency is, is a, a cornerstone of, of the way that city government needs to do business. And I believe that we have taken every opportunity and will continue to take every opportunity to maintain that transparency. I have, I have learned that it is really important to take every opportunity not to kick the can down the road. And I believe that some of the, the projects that we're looking at doing, we have a, a water facility. We, we actually have a public utility in the city of Fair Oaks where a lot of cities our size don't. And we have people that run these oper, do these operations that are out there helping the citizens and communicating, communicating with the citizens on a regular basis. It's, okay, if it's on my side of the media, if you go to SAWs, if it's on your side of the meter, they don't help you. Our guys are available to go ahead and at least give, offer advice. I believe that the city can always do better insofar as communicating. And I believe that we, as city government, need to believe that we're not working in a vacuum, that we are, are working with the community and invite community, come, come to our meetings and come to citizens to be heard and voice your opinions so that we know. There it is, the red light of doom. Thank you very much.
This is my real job.
I think I got it. I could have saved you a trip.
Thank you.
It's probably too late. Thoughts and engagement to date on various city needs, issues, and environment. So that's the question. City needs, from my perspective, upkeep our infrastructure. That includes water delivery, clean, safe water, upkeep and continue to maintain our roads. I think we have over 71 miles of roads, 60 miles of roadway, upkeep the wastewater operation, even though not all of us are on the wastewater operation. I mean, it's still an essential service. And so how do we eke, upkeep and maintain all those essential services while keeping our taxes low? Something I think we've done over the last year and would like to continue to do. I think that involves creative and transparent financial planning on behalf of, of the city, something I think they've done. And I don't know, I know it's been reported, but our finance department has, has won numerous awards for their reporting and transparency. We just, our budget just got audited and they got the, the highest level grade for their budget. And, and so I think that their work should be commended from, from that respect. So I think the needs will continue. Those are the needs that'll continue into the future. And so we just need to keep an eye on that. Issues, growth, and everything that comes with it, that affects our water, water use, traffic, and with traffic, you know, comes the, the road issues and public safety. I think there's maybe 2,000 acres left, give or take, that can be developed in Fair Oaks Ranch. A lot of the growth is outside of the city limits. Strict compliance with the UDC can help with that growth. I think everyone wants the city to be less dense, not more dense. That also sort of segues into the environment. Keeping the city, you know, semi-rural in nature. You know, we have a, enforcing the UDC, enforcing the tree preservation plan and the tree mitigation plan, when developers want to come in and develop certain properties. Make sure that those lot sizes conform with the UDC, which for the most part are going to be large lot sizes. Also, I've looked at, and I think they're in the crowd, I've looked at a potential ordinance to, to apply to the city as a whole, how can we preserve our heritage oaks? That's something that I would like to, to look into in terms of the environment. In terms, so that's the needs. Engagement, I've been on city and the MDD for a year and a half. I take phone calls. I take emails. People have my cell phone number. If you want it, I'll be happy to give it to you. I've met with residents, you know, at HEB, at their homes, whenever, wherever. If you have a question or have any concerns, I'm always open to, open to have that conversation. Just feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
The question is, what are your thoughts on the potential 5,000-square-foot community center?
Would you like to expand?
Can I change the subject?
No.
Excuse me? Thoughts on the potential 5,000-square-foot community center, its size, its use, its maintenance, its parking, its putting, putting the issues to voters?
Putting.
Putting, yeah. I am in favor of the asset of the community center to be there. It's a good place to be. It's a place that the citizens know where it is. And it's something the citizens can enjoy, the city can enjoy. And it will, it will bring benefits and rewards to the city continually into the future.
Is Carol Willoughby out there? Oh, that's unfortunate, because I'd like her to answer it. She lives on Chartwell. You don't. Does anyone here live on Chartwell? Would you like to answer the question? It just seems like a shame that we're building and blocking off one neighborhood. It's not the proper place for a community center. I'm for a community center.
She has her minutes?
Yep. Oh, guess we're going to be blocked out. I would just like to put the issue to the voters. I've run two polls online. First one was in February. I got about 90 responses, 75% no, about 10% yes, and about 15% more studying and involved the community. I ran the poll again last month. There was over 100 responses. The first poll was just Fair Oaks Ranch North, I'm next door. The second poll was both of them, same, same response, 75% no. are in. I've been in two of them, and there were multiple empty chairs in both of them. The last one, last week, was relatively full until the presentation from the high school teacher ended, and then half the people in the room got up and left. There is room for a lot more people from the city to attend the meetings, at least in my experience at this point. And I've actually asked Greg again about this once before, and he said that there are very few meetings, I believe, to, tell me if I'm misquoting you, that the room actually gets filled up. Most of the time, it's kind of like it has been the last few times I've been there. I also understand that the city wants to use that room for voting in state and national elections, but my understanding is that that's for Kendall and Bear County. Well, guess what? I live in Comel County, so I'm going to still have to drive to Bolverde to cast my vote. And so it's not really helping me in that manner. I don't know how much of the city lives in Comel County, probably not a whole lot, but I don't understand why they would be excluded. I've also read that it's supposed to be a place for other organizations to hold meetings. Forha, I've heard possibly Rotary, Boy Scout groups, whatever, other organizations being able to hold meetings there, which their meetings are all being held somewhere at this point. I don't know how adequate all their facilities are, but I've also heard that it was supposed to be, possibly be rented out to residents for personal events. I haven't seen anything anywhere where the city is projecting any revenue from that renting out. And I think most of these proposed uses will present parking problems and traffic problems, especially for the residents of the Chartwell neighborhood. Even if you agree with these uses and that the city, that the building is necessary, I don't understand why we aren't renovating the existing building at a fraction of the cost as opposed to demolishing the existing building and building a new one, likely to put the heritage trees at risk. It just doesn't make sense from almost any standpoint to me to spend around $3 million for a new building when there's an existing structure which can be renovated to serve the same function. Thank you.
I have 15 pages of notes on the community center. So I'm going to be brief, as brief as possible. The idea of a place to meet in the city has been in the works for years now, and it predates me. When city hall was renovated, council chamber space, which is utilized by numerous city boards and commission, was lost to make way for office space. They needed it. We have known that the use of the police training area was a temporary fix. It's a courtroom. It's an emergency operations center. It's been used for voting, and I'll tell you, this is broken. Time to move on and fix it. The city needs a place not only for council, but for the use of all the different organizations in the city, and there are many, to have a meeting, workspace, whether it be the HOAs, the civic organizations like the Rotary, Scouts, et cetera. It will also provide additional conference room space. I've personally walked around looking for a place to have a meeting with somebody while I was doing city business and couldn't find a space to go ahead and sit down and have a quiet chat. We have the opportunity to apply and use grant money to help fund this endeavor, no matter how you feel about it. There will be city funds expended, for sure. It will need to be outfurnished and outfitted, but the majority can be handled with grant money. The club renovation has done away with the space that we have used for our state of the city gathering. Scheduling with churches in the area while accommodating is expensive, and the city should have its own space to operate with. Utilizing a management plan, I believe we can adequately address the concerns that I and other council members have been hearing from and discussing at length with area residents. I don't have all the answers on the costs. I'm not sure that I'll vote for it when all the costs are known. But I do know that this problem is another one of those problems that can't be kicked down the road. The numbers also have to make sense. We're looking to build a building that can be multipurpose, available for use by residents and civic forums, but not the Taj Mahal. Thank you.
Yeah. So, I promise you, this is not a lawyer answer. Where am I on the community center? I truly am somewhere in between. And if you don't believe me, go back to a few meetings, city council, I think it was in January, February, and I expressed a number of concerns. It's on YouTube. I've had numerous conversations with residents of Chartwell where I have expressed these concerns. There are pros, there are cons, and I'm going to list those for you. A lot of the pros, I think Scott mentioned. We currently meet, not only city council, boards, committees, commissions, we want to promote citizen involvement. We just formed a new committee, and we all try to squeeze in and schedule ourselves in the police training room, which also doubles as the municipal court. This community center long predates me, and when I came on council, I believe the design process for the current plans were currently underway. So I just kind of came in midstream. My understanding was that the current location was sort of a temporary nature because they redid city hall. And I'm not sure that continuing to meet in the police training room and the municipal court is a long-term solution. So we could use a bigger space to hold meetings, committee meetings, elections, town halls. We have, I believe, over 20 HOAs in the city of Fair Oaks, not just Forha, and numerous local groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, things like that. So I think that space could be used for them. Location-wise, there is a pro for location in that it's generally centrally located, it's next to the police department. Cons, overall price tag, still unknown, although there's been estimates. Cost of maintaining, outfitting, insuring that building, to me, that's still unknown. We've got estimates, but I'm not comfortable with estimates. Location, there is a con to that, and that's close to two different neighborhoods, Saddle Song Neighborhood and Chartwell. And then the parking is, they say it should fit, but to me, it does look tight. I know there's been discussions with having an agreement with Bernie ISD to park in the elementary school parking lot, but I'd like to see some sort of agreement, some sort of understanding that that is something that we can do. Uses, who's going to use it? How can they use it? When are they going to use it? Is it open to the public? Is it only open to the city residents? How is that enforced? What is the true purpose of this building? Can we get it in writing? Can we have an understanding amongst everyone as to who can use it, when, how and why? There's a lot of questions that I still have, and so I've expressed those before, I'll express them again, and that's why I say I truly am in the middle of it.
I don't think any of us are saying that it wouldn't be nice to have some extra space to do things that we want to do. The problem is, is that we already have a building. And the suggestion is that we demolish a building when there's no need for that. It can be completely reimagined, reconfigured, doll it up any way you want. The HOA has already got their own building. I think they're only supposed to have two rooms. They've now commandeered the whole building, that's fine, I guess. Maybe they could share it with some of the other homeowners associations. But there's no reason to bring on this massive project at these kind of amounts of money when you've already got a building. You can design it any way you want. Clear it out, doll it up, and there'll be plenty of room for the city council to have all their meetings, for people to vote, and you won't be harming, there's no reason to harm these trees that have been there, talk about environment. So I guess what I'm saying is, you know, somebody once said to Abraham Lincoln, they said, you know, I've got a, Mr. President, we've got a good choice here for a postmaster general. And President Lincoln said, we already have a postmaster general. So we've already got a building, do whatever you want with it. Don't destroy it. Dig down five feet of excavation. I promise you, that's going to damage the trees that are around there when there's no need for it. Thank you.
Do we have the Bernie ISD candidates here? So, hold your hands up. Okay. We are kind of at the end of time. We could go through another question here, real quick. It's probably a good thing, but I'll do this. Thank you. This process, I look for feedback from you, and you can point it back at Forha, and it'll get to me. The objective that we have in this process is one, not to disadvantage any candidate that's up here. The guy that gets the question first is the one that's really on the hot seat, and everybody else gets to think about it for a while. Also don't want anybody to be able to wire a question into a particular candidate so they know what they're going to get. This is a work in progress. This is the second time I've used this. The ISD will be the third, and we'll see what we come back with from there. But if you have recommendations, please get them to Forha, and they will get them to me, and we'll end up working through this. And improve on this, adjust this, or dump it, if that's the right thing to do. And with that, I'd like to thank the candidates for their time and coming up here, and invite you to go down and say hello to the people while we get set up for the ISD candidates. Thank you.
For the candidates, I have six questions, individually packaged. And what will happen with those is we'll start at this end, I'll hand one, get to pick one, I'm not going to pick it for you. You open it, you read it into the mic, so everybody knows what we're doing, and you'll have a maximum of three minutes to say what you want to say. You don't have to use the whole three minutes. If you can be precise, it's a wonderful Mark Twain sort of skill. And you'll pass it to your left, it'll go on down. When it comes to the next one, you get it. And we go one by one, and we run. I don't expect to get through any more than four. So that y'all understand how much time you've got, I've got a little friend back there. Put the lightsaber up so I can see it. That'll go on when you start. When you've hit two minutes, it goes to yellow. When it hits red, it starts screaming at you. Okay? All right. Okay. Anybody just come in from outside that didn't participate in the last one that we did that would like me to go over the rules? Okay, cool. So, for opening, I start on this end, and each of you get two minutes to kind of give your background and why you're doing this and that sort of thing. That's your elevator speech. So have at it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you so much for being here this evening and for giving us this opportunity. First, I want to start off by saying my name is Maritza Gonzalez-Cooper. It has been truly a privilege and an honor to serve on the Bernie Board of Trustees for the last 12 years. And I just have had such a wonderful journey working alongside our fantastic educators. They're the best in the state. We have fantastic staff. Just working with the community and our parents honestly has been just amazing. So thank you for this opportunity. I hope to, as an incumbent, hope to be reelected. And what I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, my three kids have all gone through various Bernie ISD schools. I was just telling Dana here that when my kids were growing up, I said, you know, we can go to any school because they're all fantastic, they're all fabulous, they all have their own little flavor, but we just have such a great school district. What I'd like is for us to continue on that path that we have, that this journey that I've been on has been just nothing but short of amazing. And so to continue working with our community members and making sure that our kids have the best district, the best school for them, is my goal. And my husband is a first responder in the fire department. I've been a part of PTO since my oldest child started in elementary school, gosh, in 2004. So for us, public service is just part of our life, part of what we do. So thank you so much for having us here today.
Hello? Is this one on? Hi, my name is Sarah Falconberry. I'm running for place four. I want to thank y'all for being here tonight. I was so excited for tonight because this Fair Oaks Ranch community is a huge part of why I'm choosing to run for school board. Currently, I have lived in Fair Oaks Ranch for nine years, and my two children have gone to Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary, Voss, and next year I'll have one at Champion. As the school board makes decisions for the whole district, I think it's important to have perspectives from the whole district. And that's where I offer a unique perspective that's not currently on the board of being a Fair Oaks Ranch resident and have kids currently in the district at schools that are not represented. Like Champion High School, the largest school in our district, there's no one on the board who currently has a child there and it has a new administrator. So one of the key issues of why I chose to run was I want to represent Fair Oaks families that have kids in our school district and the taxpayers, because I understand what this community is about. What led us to be in Fair Oaks Ranch was prior to moving out here, my husband was in the military. We were stationed all over the world, which gave me a worldly perspective of different communities and cultures. So when we chose here, we knew what we were doing. As he was in the military, he went on multiple deployments, and through those deployments, I learned I can do hard things. Sometimes back home, while he was deployed, I would have to support family members after they got noticed that their service member, primarily the spouse, had been killed. And that's when I knew I can do hard things. As it continued on, my husband deployed to Afghanistan. He was shot multiple times in Afghanistan, resulting in losing his right leg. We still haven't found it, but maybe. With him healing and going through that process of recovering and transition to being a veteran, I learned to be an advocate. And I know I can advocate for things that I'm passionate about. And I'm passionate about Fair Oaks Ranch, I'm passionate about our school district and our community. And my last point is, my mother was a early childhood director and a school teacher for 28 years. So I understand what goes all in to educating these children and making a difference in their lives and fostering the love of learning in each child. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you so much for being here this evening and for giving us this opportunity. First, I want to start off by saying my name is Maritza Gonzalez-Cooper. It has been truly a privilege and an honor to serve on the Bernie Board of Trustees for the last 12 years. And I just have had such a wonderful journey working alongside our fantastic educators. They're the best in the state. We have fantastic staff. Just working with the community and our parents honestly has been just amazing. So thank you for this opportunity. I hope to, as an incumbent, hope to be reelected. And what I'd like to tell you a little bit about myself, my three kids have all gone through various Bernie ISD schools. I was just telling Dana here that when my kids were growing up, I said, you know, we can go to any school because they're all fantastic, they're all fabulous, they all have their own little flavor, but we just have such a great school district. What I'd like is for us to continue on that path that we have, that this journey that I've been on has been just nothing but short of amazing. And so to continue working with our community members and making sure that our kids have the best district, the best school for them, is my goal. And my husband is a first responder in the fire department. I've been a part of PTO since my oldest child started in elementary school, gosh, in 2004. So for us, public service is just part of our life, part of what we do. So thank you so much for having us here today.
Hello? Is this one on? Hi, my name is Sarah Falconberry. I'm running for place four. I want to thank y'all for being here tonight. I was so excited for tonight because this Fair Oaks Ranch community is a huge part of why I'm choosing to run for school board. Currently, I have lived in Fair Oaks Ranch for nine years, and my two children have gone to Fair Oaks Ranch Elementary, Voss, and next year I'll have one at Champion. As the school board makes decisions for the whole district, I think it's important to have perspectives from the whole district. And that's where I offer a unique perspective that's not currently on the board of being a Fair Oaks Ranch resident and have kids currently in the district at schools that are not represented. Like Champion High School, the largest school in our district, there's no one on the board who currently has a child there and it has a new administrator. So one of the key issues of why I chose to run was I want to represent Fair Oaks families that have kids in our school district and the taxpayers, because I understand what this community is about. We've been married for 17 years, and that's been wonderful. And we've lived in Bernie the last nine or 10 years. We've got two kids, one that's at Bernie Middle School North right now, and then we've also got a fourth grader at Fabra. And so they, they keep us on our toes, and are a big reason why I sought after getting on the board three, three and a half years ago, and, you know, it's the reason I continue to do that, them and, and all of our kids. You know, it's funny, when you, you, over time, or it doesn't take long, but when you get on the board, you've got, there's 11,100 and some change kids in the district, and you kind of feel like you're responsible for all of them. So it's been a real privilege to serve the last three, three and a half years, and get to, get to make a big impact in the, in the district. That's one thing that's awesome about local government and local services, that you actually really get to make a difference and hopefully improve things. So I'm, I'm an unapologetic conservative, I've been conservative, you know, forever. I'm a big advocate for parental rights. I think, you know, schools should work for the parents and the families, not, not the other way around. I don't think, I don't think parents or schools own the kids. And I think that's a great thing about how Bernie ISD functions, is that we, we have that system in place here, where the school just does a great job educating our kids, and, and then gives them back to the parents. And so I'm proud to be a part of that, and it's good to see everybody, and thanks for coming.
And so here we go.
Okay. We'll go with the top one. How's that?
And would you read it out loud?
Okay. This is pretty sticky. It is a long one. Bernie ISD now has a number of programs, such as cybersecurity, health sciences, auto technology, to provide students the ability to train for specific career paths. Do you support this, and do you have any thoughts about additional paths to pursue? Excellent question, thank you for asking. I actually have the privilege of also, of being on the cybersecurity committee right now, and they have great plans as to what they're incorporating, really working with the community to get the kids to go out and do some internships as part of their junior and senior year. So I think that's fantastic. The health sciences, we just opened at Bernie High, the, the new area for that as well. Auto tech, I think those are always great. We're always looking as far as the district goes to see what else is needed in our community. It's very important for us to stay in connection and in conversation with our community, to see what the needs are of our business owners. And so we have a really great working partnership with Toyota. They, our kids go over there, and a lot of times they even get hired after they graduate. So we've got just some great pathways. We're going to continue to look and see what else we can have. We've had conversations as far as maybe cosmetology, just, of course, the health sciences is important, that is a great need in our area. With UTSA being just a top-notch school for, for cybersecurity, of course, that's going to continue to grow that program. We have a lot of kids signed up, the interest is just amazing. So we will continue to look and see what other pathways the kids are interested in, and what our community is asking for, and what they need.
Okay. The question, do you support this, and do you have any thoughts on additional paths to pursue? And my answer is, I absolutely support this. I love that Bernie school districts are not just looking at getting our college out, our kids out of high school and out the door. They are looking to provide for their future, to help them become key community leaders. Along with these other career paths that they have set up, Bernie ISD also has like character programs that they install in these children. And I think that we are creating the next generation, we are creating the next generation of Americans. We are, and I think that's such a key concept, that Bernie ISD is really investing in their future, and our future of our economics. As Maritza had mentioned, we have a lot of internships that our community partners collaborate with. And as I've been campaigning, one of the issues I continue to hear, and I know Fair Oaks deals with this also, is maintaining that small-town feeling while you, while we have this growth. And having these career paths and collaborating with community partners for having internships, I think that's one way that you can create that small-town feeling. Because if this community partner is investing in our students, that student is investing in our community, and it's all cyclical, that we're all investing and engaged with each other. So I do think that's an excellent thing of that we are looking to better our community by having these career paths set up for these children, so that they're successful, not just to get out of high school, but long-term. Thank you.
Do I support this, any thoughts about the pursuit, paths to pursue? Yes, I do support this. One of the programs we had in JRTC is something called Cyber Patriot, which is basically how to get the kiddos to learn about security operation and keep your network safe and secure. Technology is the future, we need to invest in our kiddos to do so. Our mission should be career-ready, college-ready, or military readiness as a, as a district. Well, career-ready means I need to have the kiddos ready to have the skillset to go and take on the world, literally, go out there and get something you can learn in college, correction, in high school, to do something with it, career readiness. So technology is the future, it's happening now, and our competitors are out there, and they're maybe beating us? I hope not, but we'd make sure the kids are ready to go out there. So that's my thoughts, short to the point. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think my response to that would be, you know, who's not for that? When, when I was going to school growing up, which was a while back, I graduated high school in 2003, just to kind of age myself, but, you know, that, that wasn't that long ago, but we didn't have, we didn't have any of the stuff that we have these days. I mean, we had AP tests, you could get college credit and that sort of thing, but all the CTE and PTEC and those sorts of things, I mean, I don't, we didn't, we didn't have those opportunities. And that's one of the, I think, the great things that Bernie does, and that really public ed in the state of Texas, and, and probably in other states too, is doing, is they're getting kids ready for, for life, where you don't necessarily have to go to college. There's really good, high-paying jobs outside of going to, you know, UTSA, or A&amp;M, or UT, or Tech, or wherever. You can go out, make a bunch of money right out of high school, and be very successful. Our, our medical pathway, you can darn near get your RN almost before you got out of school, which is pretty impressive. And you know how much RNs make, you know, RNs are doing very well. One thing that I would like to see us do more of, is just open that up more. I mean, we've, we've got a number of pathways, we've got, and then in PTEC, we've got cybersecurity and the health sciences pathways. I'd love to see us introduce some of the core kind of trades as far as HVAC, and plumbing, and electrical, and those sorts of things. Those, again, just people that have that knowledge and can come out of high school with a apprentice or journeyman's, you know, with their certificate, they're, they make a lot of money. And I think that's what we want for our kids. I think we want them to be, have the option to be financially stable, be able to provide for themselves, for their family, give back to society financially, and be able to contribute. And I think that's what all of those programs do, better, better than a lot of the stuff, so.
Okay. Dr. Kraft, BISD Superintendent, recently sent out an email noting that Bernie ISD is the ninth lowest-funded district per student in the state. What are your thoughts and possible actions you would propose to deal with this? So as we all know, there's a lot of legislation going on right now in Austin. And one of the actions that we can take, like immediate action, is talk to our representatives that we need to make sure that we're passing bills that fund our education system. Particularly, our teachers need additional pay, we need to raise the basic allotment, because if we're the ninth lowest-funded district per student, the basic, the, the payment for our students is, has not grown in five years, where meanwhile, inflation has continued to increase. So that's an immediate action that we can do, that as I implore all of you to write your representative, say, fund schools. On the back end of that, Bernie has continued to do more with less. So that means we're being fiscally responsible with the dollars we have, and that they have used them to make, eighty, over, a majority of our budget is teachers' salaries, and that's where the money needs to be, directly to the students, as close as we can get to them. And I appreciate that that's what they have done in the past. We will have to be creative, depending on what legislation comes through. One possible idea that I have is involving the community more. There are key roles in the district that aren't necessarily required by Texas, but are important, that we could look at outside sponsors. We, I'm on the board of the Bernie Education Foundation, I'm the VP of Development. So let's say we need an additional career counselor. It's not required by the state of Texas, but that could really help our children be prepared for the future. We could go in and see if we could get some corporate donations to underwrite having a career counselor for a three-year grant. So we may have to, and I ask y'all as a community, how can we help our education system? So that we may have to look in other areas as we move forward in these next few years, depending on what legislation brings.
The first thought I would have about this, the ninth lowest-funded district per student in the state, interesting. How are the test scores? Is there a correlation between the funding and the test scores? I thought we're a district where you should have pretty high test scores, high graduation rates. So in other words, is this actually a problem, or is this a sign of being frugal and responsible with your money? So I want to see some correlation between the funding and the test scores, and say, now where is the problem? So I don't think it's bad to be lowest-funded, but I agree, we should fund the teachers, we should, meritocracy, good teachers get good pay, bad teachers, not so much. So basically, I don't know what the problem is, except, okay, I can see it, but what's the rest of, of, of the equation? How about the test scores, graduation rates, who are going to college, who's going out there into the military service? I need to see some of that. So more, more information, please.
Yeah, so that, that was, when we, I think when everyone heard that, that was kind of a wake-up call. To put that in perspective, there's a little over a thousand school districts in the state of Texas, so if we're the nine, number nine lowest in the state, that puts us in the bottom 0.1% in terms of per student funding per year. And that's pretty incredible, say, going to test scores there, that our students do as well as they do, because our test scores are phenomenal. We, we outperform, or our students outperform, really, any metric that you look at, whether it be region 20, we're in, out of 20 regions of the state of Texas, we're in the twentieth region, 20. We outperform that region by a wide margin, we outperform the, the state average by a wide, wide margin. We outperform, if you look at like SAT scores, something that's kind of a national metric, we outperform the nation by a wide, wide margin. So our students are incredible, that's, and that's because our teachers are amazing. The problem is, they're, our teachers are doing this really as like, almost like a nonprofit, almost just as a, as a service project, right? They haven't gotten a raise from the state. We've been able to give them minor raises as money comes available in the budget over the last five years, but they haven't got a raise from the state since 2019. The basic allotment, like Sarah had mentioned, has just stayed the same, while inflation's gone up, depending on which metric you look at, 20, 25%, if you factor in real estate, you know, it's probably closer to 35 or 40%. And the cost of living in Bernie and Fair Oaks, we all know that that's not cheap. So, yeah, write, write your state legislatures, it really needs to get fixed at the state level. There are some options we can do locally potentially, but there, you know, none of those are as good as just the state funding public ed, and funding in a way that, that Bernie has, has money to pay the teachers. So, yeah, that's what we need to do.
In February, myself and a group of about 35 other people went up to Austin, and we actually visited everyone there in Austin, just knocking on doors and imploring our legislators to do the right thing, to increase the basic allotment, to give us more funding, basically, because our teachers deserve it, our students, our children deserve it. And so what we're doing is making sure that they're listening to our voices, we're encouraging everyone to continue doing that as well. We are very fiscally responsible, obviously we have to with the ninth lowest there. So when, just as an example of that, is that we took out a bond, let's see, about two years ago, and that was 165 million, and to this day, we've paid off 43 million of that. So already, and that's saving our taxpayers millions in interest. So for us, staying conservative with our numbers, making sure that we're staying on top of that, 85% of our budget does go, as Sarah mentioned, to our staffing, which is fantastic. We wish it could be 100%. We need the state to come in and help us do that. So just as everyone mentioned, of course, the basic allotment has not increased since 2018, so we need the state to come in and help us, so that we don't have to put, pass that on, pass that on, excuse me, to our parents.
The question is, how does your education and real-world experience prepare you to be a successful school board trustee? Education and real-world experience, as I mentioned before, I spent my last years at Lackland Air Force Base in the training world. Again, as Air Education Training Committee, it was the world's largest training institution. So over there, I learned things about how a human nature, how we could work with these airmen and train to become ready for the war, et cetera, we're ready. Again, we worked in a fishbowl. No issues, that was not unseen, because that was not conducive to good training. So we had to prepare ourselves, prepare our airmen to do good things to save and protect our nation. For those who served, know, you know what I'm talking about. So my experiences are that. As well as 17 years in the classroom, I was teaching in JRTC in Midland, in Houston, and my last year was at Bernie Champion. When I was at Houston, my other experience was also ISS, in-school suspension. So they tasked ROTC that watched the kiddos, who probably need more instruction, just the most kids probably have in high school. I have been able to talk to parents, the good kids, as well as the kids who need some more structure. So talking to parents is essential. Here's the kiddo, here's the problem, here's what we need to do, we as a team, to get the kiddo back on track and get him out to graduate. So my experiences are real-world in the classroom. Thank you.
So, so my education, just to give you a little background, I, so I'm a finance major from, from Texas A&amp;M, and I also have a, an engineering degree from New Mexico Tech, if anybody's ever been to S.C. or New Mexico, that's a good place. And I'm very proud of that, actually. But, so that's kind of my educational experience. Currently, I'm a community banker here in Bernie, and so I'm still, you know, in the finance world. I sit on the finance committee with Bernie ISD, and I think that that's been, you know, as far as real-world experience and being able to contribute, that's the work that the finance committee has done alongside the superintendent and, and the former superintendent and the, and the current CFO, has been remarkable. We, so there's, you know, there's two tax rates in a school district, there's one for, that pays the teachers, basically, about 80% of it goes to that, and then, then there's the other tax rate that pays your bond payments, right? Well, our, our bond payment tax rate is currently at 32.4 cents, and that's where it sat for a while now. That, out of all the fast-growth districts, which you compare yourself to fast-growth, right? Because those are the ones that have to build new schools and facilities, and they have to pass bonds, because they're growing. Out of all the fast-growth districts in the, in the San Antonio MSA, and San Antonio de Bronfels, and Austin, we have the lowest INS tax rate, or, or the, you know, the tax rate that funds bonds, out of all of those districts. And so our debt management's been very good over the last number of years. I, I can't take all the credit for that, I mean, that's, that's been something that, you know, I'd say the finance committee and former, former boards have done as well, and the CFO's done a great job. But the way we're structuring those, those debt payments now, it allows us to pay down the debt very rapidly. And right now, we're, we're creating room for ourselves by paying down so much debt so quickly. We're creating room for additional facilities later on. Luckily, the community is not growing quite as Luckily, the community is not growing quite as fast as it was, so, you know, we'll probably be able to put some of that off longer than we had. But we're creating capacity for that. And that's, that's been, that's something that people probably won't see until we do it, until we go pass a bond, but it's, it's going to make a, the things we're doing today and over the last few years have made a big difference.
I've had the privilege in, of working in many different types of jobs. And I know one of our board members, Rich Senna back here, always says that he, he thinks about every 10 years, people tend to have a shift and a change in what they're doing. So I've had the privilege of being an art teacher, to homeschool kids, and then having my own business as far as an art studio. Right now, I'm working at USAA, which is really fantastic. Being on the board for the last 12 years and being an involved parent prior to that, I've been a part of many of the different committees throughout the district, such as the Safety and Security Committee that I'm a part of now, the CyberTech Committee. I've been a part of the bond committees in the past, bond oversight committees as well, just serving our community wherever we need to as far as the district is concerned. And so I hope to continue that as well. I think it's important for us to be, just kind of like we, we think of our kids as being well-rounded children, where we want to expose them to a lot of different things. I think as, as far as somebody being on the board as well, we want to be well-rounded, being able to have experience from all of the different committees, speaking with lots of community members.
All right. I'll start with my education. I went to Texas Tech University. My undergrad was a restaurant hotel institutional management degree. No, it's not just about waiting tables in hotel rooms. It is a business degree based on service rather than products. And serving on the school board is a service. It's customer service. Service is something that you can't, a product, if you don't sell it at Christmas, you can sell it at Easter. Service, you have one shot. And I think that's really a key component of serving on the school board, is we have one shot at this. My graduate degrees in public administration at UTSA, so go, go Birds. My professional experience is of 20 years professional and volunteer combined experience in the public sector. I've worked for several nonprofits, been a contractor for the VA, and several volunteer positions. So where I, as y'all heard in my introduction, of why I think has prepared me to be a school board trustee is my real-world experience of being that military spouse, seeing the world, having that cultural view of different communities and what it takes to be a successful community, I said. Doing those hard things, supporting those family members through those very hard times and helping them bury their loved ones and what comes next. And then advocating, as I said, for my husband, once he was wounded, helping him get his benefits and helping him recover to become a successful community member. Through that advocating, we got to be involved with George W. Bush, the former president. And this is something I wanted to share with y'all. When we were at a dinner with him one night, we're sitting at a table full of wounded service members, missing eyes, missing ears, arms, legs, and they're the ones that have lost their brothers in arms. And a service member looked at him and asked, "Excuse me, sir, do you regret sending us in the invasion to Iraq?" And I was like, "Ooh, this is a big question," because these are the people who gave the most for that decision he made. And he looked at him, he's like, "I made the best decision I could that day for all the information I had." And that stuck with me. As I move forward to be, hopefully be a school board member, I want to make the best decision that I can with all the information I have and that you trust that I'm making that best decision, that you trust in me. Three weeks from now, I might be like, "Well, that was a horrible decision," but you know that day that I had the best interest of the community, the children, in mind.
This is a fun one. Are funding of school choice and funding public education mutually exclusive? Please explain your position. So obviously, that's a hot topic button right now. I don't think they are mutually exclusive. So, you know, my background growing up was, I actually kind of did a mix of public school, private school. I was homeschooled for a little while. And so I can see all three sides of that, and there's, there's benefits to all three. You know, Bernie and Fair Oaks, we have just such an incredible school district here that, you know, it makes so much sense to send our kids here, and it's been amazing. But what, the way I like to tell people my views on school choice is, I'm a big believer in the free market. I think anytime you let the free market work and do its thing, and you don't pick winners and losers, it's always a good thing, whether that be school choice and having competition, whether it be business, you name it. Free, the free market always works. That's what's made America great in so many ways. The issue that I have with what's currently happening with school choice, and I'm, and I'm not completely against it. I'm not, I'm not here to say I'm, I don't like at all what they're doing. I think there's room to do some of what they're doing. And, and it may be, maybe even improve things for certain students, especially in lower income and urban areas that, that don't live in a school district like us, you know? I mean, if I didn't live in Bernie, I would, I would probably want school choice. But the danger in doing it the way that they may, they look like they may do it and that there's a lot of talk of doing it, is that it's not really a fair playing field. So we get about $9,700 per student per year. Like we said, that's in the bottom 0.1% in the state of all the school districts, of the public school districts. So we're already kind of underfunded. A, a private school can charge whatever they want. And so, you know, if you give people vouchers, they can go drive up the cost of private education and then take all your great teachers and, you know, take them, take them to the private school. I think that means I'm out of time, but, yeah, so. I got a minute? Oh, okay, great. You know, the other thing is that there's no accountability, right, in a private school or, or homeschooling? That, I'm, I'm not as big, I'm not as worried about, I guess, just because I, I do believe in the free market. I think when people have the right to choose, that parents will choose the right thing, hopefully. And so I think if you, if you, if the government does this where they don't pick winners and losers, it would be a good thing. But that's, that's hard to do and there's no perfect solution. So hopefully they, hopefully they come up with one.
Well, like Garrett said, this is a hot topic right now. I see both sides of the coin as far as, you know, for parents, I think every parent has to make the decision that's best for their children and their family. For us here in Bernie, we're very fortunate with fantastic school district. Obviously, we do have a, a great private school as well in the area, which is pretty expensive. And I don't recall off the top of my head the cost of the school, but I want to say it's probably about $30,000 a year, if I'm not mistaken, Rich. Do you know? And so the vouchers that they're talking about for school choice gives the parents, I think they're talking about $12,000. So that is still a significant amount of money that the parents are going to have to come out with, out of pocket for that. So I think that's where, you know, there's, we need to take a look at that. But I can certainly see this side. For me, when I think of school choice within Bernie, when the kids go particularly to high school, they have school choice here. They can pick which school they want to go to, especially if they want to just concentrate on a particular program that's at one of the schools. For example, at Bernie High School, we have a fantastic culinary program. And so some kids may, can still go travel between both schools if they want to stay a champion. We'll bus them over. But certainly, if they want to go to Bernie High School, the whole time, they can do that as well. So for us, I think we have our own version of school choice that I wish more, more school districts offered their kids.
All right. This is a tough one to be the last one because they've all said key issues on this. I'm pro-student. We need to make sure we're meeting the needs of our children. With this, and as Maritza had said, Bernie does have school of choice. So we are, we are meeting the needs of our students, of giving them the choice and being able to foster the love of learning. If the vouchers or ESA, if they do go through, it would really have a relatively small impact in our district, just based on the kids that go to private schools and home schools. But if this does go through, I, there needs to be accountability. These are taxpayer dollars, our dollars, y'all's dollars, that you're paying to the state. So there has to be accountability and they have to be good steward of these taxpayer dollars. And also the accessibility, that these, this option of vouchers or public school choice needs to be offered to all students, that the private schools don't get to just pick and choose that they want the cream of the crop. They need to get the dyslexic kid, the special needs kid, the ADHD kid. So those are where, as this legislation is still being worked out, I hope they continue to focus on making, meeting those needs of accountability and accessibility. Thank you.
Okay, so school funding, choice, public education, are they mutually exclusive? Explain my position. I believe that school choice is the right thing to do because, again, market forces, you have to compete to become, earning the parent's money and the child to come into my district, into my school here. That's always a positive. The free market forces works. The caution I'm trying to say is, okay, for instance, someone said we shouldn't have public money going into a private school. Well, honestly, that's going to be taken care of by Austin, so that's an initial norm. My argument is, they're taxpayers too. They have their parents, they have their kids, they want to get educated as well. So basically, that discussion will be handled by Austin shortly, we hope. So it's positive to have this. But now, what about Bernie? We have a fantastic district, fantastic extracurricular, fantastic music, dance, athletics. We have all those things. Public education doesn't quite have enough of. So basically, we'll sell ourselves by saying we have fantastic program. This is your school of choice. Please choose Bernie ISD and bring your money with us. Thank you.
Okay, I promised that we would get out of here about nine. It's about nine. So we will be doing, leaving and stopping right here. I'd like to thank the candidates for your time and putting up with me in my process. And I encourage all of you, vote. Please vote. Thank you.